Who's our, um, one of our tech gurus in town with the broadband? And I can't remember your name.
Kathy Snack. I'm absolutely observing. Thank you.
I see you too. Good to meet Rachel.
Thanks for volunteering this or?
Yeah.
Absolutely happy to be here.
Great.
So when it comes time, I didn't know if you had questions you wanted to ask Rachel or if you wanted to have Rachel talk about herself a little bit or it's up to you guys.
Oh. Do you want to call us to order, Bob?
What's that?
Do you want to call us to order?
Are you all ready?
I think so.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I'd like to call a meeting to order at seven oh five. And, uh, minutes for, uh, September twenty-sixth. Did you have any comments?
I had one quick thing, Carl. Sorry, I forgot to, I'm stealing your stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm probably, I'm sorry for asking you million before. Um, it says, um, oh, that I was emailing a copy of the state application form to Pat and I think what I was doing that that's referring to was emailing Rachel actually just some info about the health officer position.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
Okay.
And I would accept the minutes from the twenty-sixth as I amended and Anna amended.
Okay.
Oh, they are. Right. Yes. Um, yes, Pat or Rachel, if you would like to say anything about yourself or?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, my family and I moved to Mount Vernon about four years ago. Um, we live on El Rey Road. My husband's a, um, farmer there. Um, I work up at Scoville and Family Medicine. I'm a full spectrum family medicine doctor and I have a clinic there.
Where?
Scoville and Family Medicine. Um, and I catch babies and take care of pregnant people. Um, and I'm really interested in public health too, particularly, um, the T-FAST contamination that's going on in Central Maine right now. I have some research background of that and I've been working with the CDC and some folks at Main Med to try to investigate that further in the Central Maine region. So I'm excited to be here.
So excited to have you.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for stepping forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You've got some pretty, uh, heavy shoes to follow.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
But we do.
Fantastic.
We do appreciate you stepping in.
Me too.
And I would imagine most of your direction will be from either Rescue or, uh, maybe even the town's, uh, code enforcement officer.
Okay.
If he sees something, he might give you a buzz.
Okay.
But, uh.
Will you be writing, uh, periodical articles, um, in our newsletter?
I certainly can. Yeah, that's a, I don't know that that'll look up to Dr. Onion standards, but I can do my best.
That would be tough.
That would be a good idea. What's the deadline? The twenty-fifth of each?
Yeah, about that.
Twenty-fifth of each month?
Yes.
Okay.
Not that you have that.
Whenever you have something you want to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ticks and brown-tailed moths are always good.
Everyone, yes.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Wonderful. Well, I think we, I think we already voted you into the position a couple of meetings ago, but do we need?
Did you come up and sign, uh, swear in?
I have not sworn in yet.
Okay, you can just come up to Heather anytime and get sworn in.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're doing the rescue medical director position too, right?
Yes.
Pat, do we need a swearing in form for that?
That's a great question. Whatever.
Okay.
Probably a good idea.
Might as well. Yeah. Um, and does Rescue usually vote on that position or should we? Should we vote to support Rescue's choice?
Yeah.
It's all, it's all virgin waters for us and I'm not sure what we need to do. Uh, Rescue has met, um, Rachel. And so, um, but I don't know whether we took a vote.
I don't remember that.
No.
Okay. Well, maybe we.
We should.
Maybe we should.
Yeah.
Um, want me to motion?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'll motion that we, the select board support Rachel in the role of medical direct, is department medical director, Pat?
Rescue's medical director.
Rescue's medical director, um, starting immediately.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, oh, a second. And about.
Great.
Very good. We'll do the paperwork and get it ready for you.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for jumping in.
Yeah.
Did you leave Rachel for anything else tonight?
Not really.
Um, okay, then do you have any applications for the social worker army to look at?
Uh, no. Oh, wait a minute. No, I don't.
Do you like that little moment of excitement?
I thought there was one.
There is.
I just replied to that email.
I do have one.
Okay, great.
Had four inquiries.
Really?
One was asking questions of you.
Right, that you sent to me.
Yeah.
And I replied to her. We asked her if she would wait until we had our, our, our next aging in place meetings. She asked a lot of good questions.
Yeah, and I sent out, so I sent out four, uh, applications. And, uh, so I've received that one and you've got questions from that one. So two of them, we haven't heard anything back from.
Okay, and how long ago was that?
Um, couple of weeks.
Hmm.
So.
Well, we didn't set a deadline, did we?
No, I could put it, keep it in the newspaper a little bit longer if you want.
Yeah. I think we should keep it open until we, you was appropriate to do that.
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
So what's the criteria for keeping it open? That you get X number of applications?
Well, it's nice to have at least three. We only had one for the clerk's job, so. Well, I kept that one open.
Or it's unfair to individuals to leave it open and not have a.
Well, if you like that one, you can go.
Okay.
But you've got one that has, has asked questions that seem to be pretty good.
Yes, they were excellent questions.
You've got two people then.
We're not meeting again until, um, hmm, the end of the month. And I shared that with her. Did you guys want to look at this before I take it or?
You can.
Carl, did you want to see it?
Um, if you wanted to, you could always let this person know. I don't know if you have their email or anything.
I do.
But just say.
Yeah.
What's that there?
That I passed it on to, uh, Rescue.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you could just tell this person like, you know, we, we won't meet for another little while, so don't be surprised.
Oh, sure.
If you're worried that they're.
Yeah.
Oh, good point. Cause we went, oh, that's a trend.
Yeah.
My plan is that's what I do. Do you want to look at this now?
Yes, and good luck.
Pat, you're very welcome. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Good to see all of you.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, thanks for coming up.
You can hang out if you want.
Thank you.
Bye you too. Good night.
Jason like said I would let you come up early.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so I, uh, received the last, uh, bill from Meters Garage. Um, so his, the last bill for repairs on fifty-three was ten thousand six nineteen sixty-three. So ten thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, so double check me on my math, but the first round of, of repairs, uh, was two thousand one forty-four sixty-three. And if you add the second, uh, bill, billing that equals a total of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, so our total repair count was only for nine thousand dollars for the entire year. Obviously, this is unexpected. Uh, leaving us roughly a shortfall just in the, uh, truck repairs at three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. And then out of this account normally comes the spring required pump test, which I'm told that usually runs roughly about twelve hundred dollars per truck on average. If wrong, then it's kind of a, a hit or miss. It depends on how the pump test goes. So the true shortfall that we know of roughly is somewhere around seven thousand three sixty-four twenty-six.
Can you say that number again, please?
Yep, uh, seven thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. And that would be adding in the, uh, shortfall just from the truck repairs on top of what was anticipated.
So what color is that?
That it's under the, um, it's under the special line in the budget under, um, vehicle maintenance. Yeah, vehicle maintenance, which is nine thousand. And you'll see the first, and that there's six thousand eight fifty-five still available in that account.
Okay, what, what we're gonna have to do, we've got a couple of cases where we're gonna have some overruns. Um, and one's gonna probably be the transfer station, cause we're gonna talk about it tonight, uh, a little later. Um, so we're probably talking about a special town meeting at some point.
Okay.
Um, and so this will have to come up at that point.
Okay. In the meantime, I'll move funding around to get it paid.
Yeah, pay it, pay it.
And we'll, we'll work it out, um, at a later time.
That sounds good. Yeah, did Carrie think maybe just to use the water hole line for now? Is that my dim memory?
Yeah, but that's not gonna be enough to cover. I'll have to, I'll look.
But just, just have him take it out of the like, tell it that it's supposed to make it go negative.
Oh, you just leave it as a negative for now?
Yeah.
Okay, and then it's cleaner in the book.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That makes sense.
Do a, yeah.
Cause that way you're not hiding it and you're just doing it right there and we can see it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Dress it at that point.
Yeah. And, um, yeah, so I, um, we are looking at, um, normally, I, I don't have anything else expected or known for vehicle repairs. Rescue still has their repair account available to fifty-six.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, usually if vehicles needed tires or something like that, that would come out of this account. No known issues to add to this problem.
Yeah, this is early and still early in the season, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. But the truck, uh, Ron Lockwood has driven it and, uh, said that it works like it did again from the factory. So it's, so, yeah, it's, it's running well, so.
Awesome.
That's good news.
That is good news.
And, and in fairness to meters, it did take a while to do the work, but his labor rate's only seventy-five dollars an hour and I don't know where I can get a.
What's the age of the truck?
Uh, so that truck technically would be replaced and we would be looking at replacing it and, um, it's a nineteen ninety, so it would be twenty twenty-eight. That truck should go out of service. So we still have a fair amount of time, you know, with the truck, so.
Yeah.
Five more years at least.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, on good news, um, fire department, um, Lucas Rummel is working on a grant. Uh, we've, with new firefighters, we're finding it hard to fit with gear that we have in-house to fit some of the firefighters. So we're applying through Firehouse Subs, um, for grant money, um, and roughly about ten sets of turnout gear. I talked with the owner of the franchise in Waterville. Um, he said, uh, the amount that I'd be asking for is not unheard of being funded, so, which is about thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for ten sets of gear.
Oh.
So, um, it's a fair amount of money that would save the town tremendous, uh, tremendously. At this point in I don't even have enough. Uh, actually, I have enough to buy just one set of turnout gear. So I will needed person and buy one set this year. Um, and, um, it's just how, how it works. You know, once we go and try and raise money, you know, elsewhere, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason, for all your work as always.
Yeah, you're, yeah, there's, um, work that's been done on the station. Door locks are completed.
Yep.
Yes, we just paid that.
Okay.
Invoice, I think.
And, um, the fire detectors system, the, that's the special line item. I see work that's been completed. They told me they were in. I told them about a couple of efficiencies. They were coming back. I haven't seen the bill yet. Um, but then the only other thing that I have in there, um, that I would put into that same account line item would be, um, Paul and Scott are working on, um, some security cameras.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, that whatever money's left in that line item, I'll be drawing for anything necessary for that, but there, it won't be a lot left over. There may be a little bit, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Um, Firescape is my next order of maintenance for those stations. And garage door panel. Let's, uh, rot it out.
Hmm.
Good, good. Thank you. Uh, I had one question. Um, the water faucet outside, does that get tested?
I, I'm glad you asked, cause that was on my brain to ask you. So that was a question for me to ask you. Now the, now the question lies is, do you want me to try and find, um, like, just get a water sample for it or? I know it's been tested in the past, but.
I just go, I, I would just get, um, when you're in the state, is the state labs.
Yeah.
Know where it is, across from the fire, uh, memorial.
Okay.
The DH.
DHS?
Yeah, you just ask for a, uh, E. coli test.
Okay.
For drinking water.
Okay. Um, and that's the only one we need to make sure we're, we're also, okay. What I will do, I know that we have, um, a water softener system there. Um, one thing that came up was, and Dana happened to see it, uh, and spoke to me, actually, his son Matt, um, spoke to me. There was a truck, um, a cement mixer getting fresh water out of the tap at the station.
Hmm.
A hundred or so gallons worth. Like, that's a little expensive for the town to be doing that. And then he said somebody had given it permission. I said, well, I didn't. So, but if you see somebody down there, certainly tell them, not that much.
Yeah, I see people doing their.
You know, the regular drinking water drives, that's great, but, uh, and we've always had that open and available to the public for that purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah. A little different than a.
I love when I'm getting a water test.
Yeah, if we get it tested, then we could put a little thing on there saying it's been tested at a date.
Yep, absolutely. And then we can get that into the file folder too. I'm sure that'll be one of the things they look for.
Hmm.
Yeah, cause I never got the beach tested this year. I just, by the time I bought or getting the kit, it was just so late.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, broadband?
Uh, thanks for having me. There's, um, a level of activity just seems to be getting more and more.
You're getting closer and closer.
Yeah, so, um, the poll survey, you've seen some trucks around town. I'll pass around a, an image, uh, that's about a week old. Uh, they, they say they're gonna do about six hundred polls a week. That's probably less than half of the polls in town. But it gives you an idea of what they're doing and they actually are doing something. Uh, the, the, the next thing on, uh, our agenda was the ballot question. And I thank you again for all of the support from this group and this town. Uh, I think we're all set with that and our, our big, uh, uh, the, the next steps are to, uh, communicate, 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 uh, and I'll talk about that in a second. Uh, we also thank you for your support, uh, for us helping us get legal services as a part of the, the application process. Unfortunately, the, the application for the grant that we're looking for, uh, is, uh, due on the day after election day. So there's a number of things that appears to be required in the grant process based on the guidelines that would need us to make, get our agreement with Matrix in place before the ninth. And we certainly don't want to leave it to the last day after the election. So, um, we're going to go ahead and, um, start talking to them about the agreement. Thank you. We'll need legal advice. Uh, we have money left in the ARPA account. If I'm listening to the town, um, the previous conversation about town finances, so, uh, uh, I believe we have more than enough to cover whatever legal expenses might come up and, um, I don't know what the process is for whether we have to get advance approval. I think that ARPA funds have already been approved. And it's, uh, it's just a matter of, um, uh, that being a part of it. My reckoning is that we have about fourteen thousand dollars of unencumbered ARPA funds.
How much?
Fourteen thousand.
You should have more than that.
Well, I'm counting some of the money that hasn't been spent yet. We have fifteen thousand dollars allocated to pay mission consulting for their support in preparing the application. We have money for Remi, Remi can French, who's supporting us in a number of ways. I don't think she's been spending the, like, we hired her for fifteen to fifteen hours a week at, uh, I think thirty-five dollars an hour, uh, until the election. And she hasn't been doing, uh, I think she's been averaging maybe ten hours a week. So, uh, there was some other money we used, well, for the poll survey.
Right.
Just fifty-seven thousand dollars that probably hasn't been billed yet.
Yeah.
But a- after all is said and done, I, I, I had provided an exhibit to, um, Harry, uh, with these numbers on it and, uh, I'm glad to send you another copy if that's something that you need.
Hundred and, hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
We're in the two tranches, right? And some of the, the first tranche was used for other purposes, as I recall. Maybe something with the bridge?
No.
The engineering study?
I think, I feel like we pulled, I'll have to look back through some notes, but I, I think the engineering came out of the first ARPA installment.
And I'll remind you that, that the county got twenty-two billion dollars of ARPA funds. It's a mystery what they're going to do with it. They, they have, in other counties in Maine, they have provided the money for broadband and other infrastructure types of projects. Uh, and the thing that's a real concern is that if they don't use it, they're gonna lose it. The government's gonna claw it back. So that's just, uh, for you to consider. Anyway, there's a couple of other things I wanted to mention quickly, not to take up too much of your time. So we're gonna be focusing on the application and there's two, I mentioned two things we need to do, uh, to, uh, get that done. Uh, one is, uh, communication. So we've been present at the transfer station, sending emails. We're having a public meeting on October twenty-second. Uh, we, uh, Matrix is planning to send a letter to people in town based on the tax, uh, records. Carl is working. uh, records. Carl is working on it with, uh, Ken Elliott, our communications person, uh, to tweak some of the language on that. Uh, there's gonna be law, lawn signs going up. Uh, that Matrix is gonna be handling, uh, and so, um, that's gonna just kind of get more intense. Uh, second thing is, we're looking to get letters of support as of to be included in the applications. We'd like to get these by the end of the month.
Hmm.
Uh, we're going to talk to the educational stakeholders in town. Uh, Scott Herrick is helping us with that. Uh, he's also talking to some of the local businesses, because he has that connection through their, uh, electronic use. Uh, some of the town committees, uh, which the obvious committees, uh, you know, the fire department would be one, the, um, I guess that's not a committee, the, um, Aging in Place Committee has an interest in this, the library. We've been talking to about, uh, those things. And I'd like, um, like to formally ask the select board to consider preparing a letter of support for the grant application. Um, uh, we'd like to have something like in place by the end of the month to incorporate in our application. So if that's something you want to think about and how you might want to approach it, we're glad to help in any way we can with that. And that's really all I had to say. If you have any questions, uh, I'm assuming we can just go ahead and talk to the lawyer in regard to the, um, contract with Matrix, and we'll just keep you posted on that. I think the fees to date for the bond counsel and the ballot initiative are, um, fairly modest compared to what I'm used to, but maybe my standards are kind of married to a lawyer, so I can't. But, um, anyway, uh, and if, if you, well, want me to talk to, to Carrie about the ARPA funds and maybe helping out with the, some of the budget challenges with the town, that'd be something we'd be glad to do.
Okay.
That's all great updates. Is there anything in terms of a letter of support, any particular things you?
Well, I think, I hope you've been involved enough to know. I think that, uh, it goes back to the comprehensive plan.
Hmm.
That basically said that the town, uh, really, the, the broadband committee was established to do research on this issue, this, the comprehensive plan thought that it was a, uh, a need in the future. I think the pandemic, uh, accelerated a perception of the need. Uh, we've done surveys of the town, which, um, you know, we, some of them have been published in the newsletter. I'd be glad to get you that information, but you look at, at the people who responded to the surveys, people, uh, particularly the folks who don't have spectrum are, are very unhappy, uh, with what they have and the cost. The people with spectrum that we've talked to, uh, many of them asked the question, well, we have spectrum. It's pretty good. Why do we need to do this? And, and the answer is, it's about the future. Uh, Spectrum is not building any more cable networks. They're building fiber. We have a map of the United States where they're investing five billion dollars, and, uh, all the states that are working in are listed, and Maine is not one of them. So, uh, if the, if the cable company that has two-thirds of the business in our town is saying that fiber, optical fiber is the future, then they probably know something about it. And that's, and our committee basically inclusion, um, six months ago. And so it's really, this is all about the future. It's, it's for, uh, kids to have a better, uh, experience going to school. It's about, uh, older folks having their children and grandchildren want to come and visit because they can still stay online. I have a, a child who lives in Berlin in, in Germany and, uh, but he can work remotely. So he said, geez, I'd like to come here for the summer. So, uh, let's play, right? If you, if you want some help with the language, I'm sure we can get something back to you through Carl.
And, and I'm happy to try and write something for the fire department.
That would be great. You know, we'd like to come by and, uh, listen to, you must have some ideas on how the internet could help you do your job better.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'd like to know what they are. We can keep that in. If you want to put something in a letter, we'd love that.
Sure.
Um.
Yeah. How, uh, so, a lot of townspeople live on private roads, so how is the fiber gonna get down to those?
Right, right. So it, it was a requirement for our proposal to include every, but to include every place where somebody lives. And if somebody lives at the end of the dirt road and they're the only house, we're gonna have to look at that. We're getting, part of the poll survey is gonna tell us how many of those there are. But if there's a, a camp road and there's two or more houses on that camp road, that camp road will be treated as a public road.
Okay.
And then the, the, if anybody's driveway is, uh, three hundred feet or less, it's a, it's a standard installation. The first five hundred and seventy people who sign up will have it for free. And then, uh, anybody else after that would be two, two hundred dollar payments to hook up.
Yeah.
So the prices are lower than, uh, than other towns than we, we, we don't think we're gonna have to borrow as much money as we've been public with so far because of the, the way the, um, the guidelines for the application work, and Matrix is putting in two million dollars. So our, our program will be about two, about twenty-five percent of the total cost. Okay, sorry if I ran.
No.
I'm just.
Well, just to, for instance, Black Hill Road, there's no, uh, there's no internet.
Right.
Unless you want to get it through ComTal or whatever.
Right.
Which is hard, hard work.
My, my, mine, so that was more of a personal question, because I live in Long Acres Road, so.
Exactly.
I'm the first place in, but in order to get cable even then, they wanted some stupid price. And I'm, I'm, I don't know, maybe a thousand feet in on, on the road, but, um, you know, for.
How far from the Long Acres Road is your house?
Not, not far.
No, well, maybe a thousand feet in, um, from Bean Road.
No, but, but you're not, you're only gonna have to pay if you're more than three hundred.
Right, no, no, I'm only eighty-five feet from the.
Yeah, so you're good.
So, yeah, no, I was just curious, because there's a lot of, the other question I'd have with, uh, just asking in general here, but, um, sure, so for some people, two hundred dollars is a, is a lot. So is there gonna be some sort of assistance and some criteria maybe to help?
Well, that's a fair question. That, as, as we said, that, that there, there's gonna be a process for people to so-called pre-subscribe. It's gonna be a year before the construction starts.
Hmm.
We have to negotiate space on the tele, twenty-four hundred telephone poles, but if you're one of the first five hundred and seventy people who signs up, it's free.
Hmm.
There's also going to be, for people who are qualified for low-income assistance, there will be a special, uh, tier
Okay.
of, of rates.
There's a way to.
That'll get a thirty-dollar subsidy from the FCC, then they'll, they'll get it for free.
Yep.
I have a little bit of a problem with that. I think everybody should pay it five bucks or something, but.
You should have to pay something probably to help.
Skin in the game, right?
Skin in the game. But, but it's certainly at two hundred dollars, that's maybe not equitable for some.
Uh, well, uh, the, as I said, we, we're gonna, we, we have a whole digital equity and inclusion initiative that's gonna be doing outreach to low-income and senior people to try to get them online. If they get in line with the fir- first five hundred people, which is half of the town.
Which is me, great.
And it doesn't, and by the way, if you sign up to pre-subscribe and you change your mind when the, the wires are in front of your house, you, there's no obligation. You're basically just getting it, getting it to the head of the line.
Hmm.
And then you decide when it's, when it's available. So it's, it's a win-win for, for low-income people. And if you're over sixty-five and low income and, and have lived here for ten years, the tax stabilization laws are uh, eliminate any increase in your property taxes associated with this, which is otherwise gonna be about ten bucks.
Yeah.
Among us.
Yeah.
So when can you sign up? When are they gonna?
Oh, that was, you know, when people could sign up. That was, that's the sixty-four dollar question. Uh, Matrix is ready to go. Uh, and we, our committee has gone back and forth several times on whether we should open that up before or after the ballot question.
Oh, yeah.
And right now, we're thinking we're gonna wait till the election.
Election, yeah.
Right, and, and I just, the, the thing I was talking to Carl before the meeting was, I sent him the, we have two pieces of communication from Matrix that, and they, they will, they want our approval before they send anything. And I said, we had a discussion about the wording on the, the one that was basically get out and vote for the, for the quite valid question. And, but I sent him the one that said, here's how you can sign up. And then, and then he, I blew it, so. Yeah. So, thank you for your support as always, and, uh, I hope you can come to the meeting on the twenty-second. And in fact, if you could say a few words, I'd love to see you make the whole presentation, but I'll, I'll start with, I'll start with a few.
You'll get it me?
I have the wrong accent. I was gonna get it out of Waterville.
Oh, okay. Wrong town.
Wrong town with right accent.
I hear they had a very successful broadband.
Yeah. And, 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 um, the way things work in Biana, they don't have any cable TV.
Right.
And the, the big risk for these things is that the cable TVs companies are not just gonna lie down, and, and the other companies don't want to invest.
Hmm.
And because of the way the subsidies work, there's no taxes involved in Biana. They're gonna get it paid for entirely by the government. And, um, we don't like the, the company they chose, so necessarily. Or we don't, I wouldn't say we don't like them. We didn't choose them because they're kind of small and inexperienced. Our company has twenty-seven years of experience in doing this stuff. I don't want to be run out of town.
Okay, let's move on.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Transfer station.
Who that's been, that Scott was gonna talk to.
Um, so, you know, sheriff callback and on the drug takeback.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they don't have enough sheriffs to do our town. So the better, the best thing I can come up with would be to piggyback with Belgrade.
Hmm.
So I'll talk with Belgrade and see if they'll, uh, allow our citizens to go.
Is that taking drugs that are, that you don't need anymore and that?
Right.
You know, right, yeah. Could maybe they, I remember we filled it before.
Yeah.
I took mine over to retail, so is that, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Belgrade is doing it. So, uh, sheriff's committed, yes.
I agree here very well, so I'm.
The sheriff is committed to doing a drug takeback over in Belgrade.
In Belgrade.
So I'm gonna try to get piggybacks off of that, and then we can put out the information that Belgrade residents can go over, process that. So, I'll, I'll have to give more information as I get after that. Um. Okay, um, I'd like to.
Excuse me. Oh, I just want to mention, oh, Chuck Wright, uh, came out of surgery at three-thirty today, and he's fine.
Oh, he had. So heavy surgery day. Thank you for that update.
Um, I need the okay to buy the gates to get rid of the chains.
Hmm.
And would someone like to make a motion to do that? To allow me to go and purchase the gate?
Would love to, Bob. Uh, I have a motion that we, um, approve the purchase of the gates to replace the chains at the transfer station. Just our.
Second. Oh, three. And I will get in touch with, uh, Lynn Poole was the guy that did the, uh, all that testing. And I'll get him to, uh, put them up. See what else. Something else. Okay, um, on the, uh, swap chat, the, um, shed roof.
Yes.
Um, where it comes into the building, the two-by-sixes, they want a metal, um, brace put around and nailed.
Okay.
Um, and I might be able to get those right at flying pond. I'll check.
Okay, that'd be nice.
I'll check a minute.
Do you need? An approved, well, maybe not, if you can just get them in flying pond, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Is that for safety?
Yeah, they, they just think toenailing it in isn't quite adequate, which, it's been there forever, but, um, this is in May, risk management looking at it, so they want to be super safe. Okay, um, so, governance committee, I didn't, I don't want to bring this up yet, because I didn't get a hold of Sue. Sue Herman was the one that did it last time. Uh, we'd rather talk to her before we even discuss it here.
Hmm.
Um, appointments, okay. I'll get several appointments. I would like to nominate Pat Sheen to the broadband committee. I think so, he's. Yes. He was recommended, um, by but Herrick. And would like be on the broadband committee. You already signed that.
Should delete that. Have a certain sense. Okay, I'll second.
Uh, next one is Kylie De Haven was, uh, asked to be on the, wanted to be on the ordinance review committee, and Sue Herman uh, wrote to me and asked to do, to, uh, accommodate her. Ordinance Review Committee. And again, Scott Herrick wanted us to nominate Sally Z, C-E-H, to the, um, Board of Appeals.
Second.
I know that name last name, because he used to be a goalie for Maryland. I coached.
Sweet.
Uh, wait a minute now. We need to do one for, uh, we need to do one for, uh, that's it. Appointments. Okay, safety procedures. Uh, I guess we need to get the go-ahead purchase. Purchase these, uh, packets, right?
Hmm.
Need to buy one for the fire department, the transfer station, library, town office. We need to buy it for each of these departments. And the reason is to, uh, make sure we comply with Department of Labor, I guess.
Hmm.
Or we will be complying with them. So once we buy all of these packets and get trained by, uh, when Martin's uh, put us in a better position, well, put us in a good position, uh, basically put us where Department of Labor will not be able to find any faults with us. Correct?
Miss us, and assess penalties.
So we're gonna do this also for the fire department, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great if you could.
Because that way we'll be up to date on everything.
It'll help us get up to speed. There, there's, we're doing a lot of it, but there's still a lot of gaps that are.
Right.
That are necessary.
There may be some new stuff like, like you brought up.
Yeah. Yeah, um, and I probably would, I would utilize her probably, um, at least quarterly. Um, and I probably would, I would utilize her probably at least quarterly. But, you know, I'll sweep that somewhere into my payroll or something out there to compensate the excess that's above the contract.
Yeah, so that's a question. At least in my note, yeah, I'm wondering, so it sounds like for the fire, Jason, you'd like to do the like per year sort of retainer deal.
Yeah, absolutely. And we talked with her that, you know, probably quarterly is is probably a bare minimum for the fire department. Initially, it might be more, but.
Yeah. And what about for the other?
I think the other department is Public Works.
So, yeah, so the the minor ones look like. Well, I didn't get one of those sheets.
They were two fifty or?
They were two fifty instead of four fifty.
They were, yeah, two fifty for the book and then if we don't have the contract, the fourteen hundred that like the fire would have. It's either then it's a fifty dollar annual check in is what I have in my notes to update the book. Does that sound right?
It does, that's what I'm seeing here on this contract that I have.
And then ensures the manual's up to date here.
So we need to do, we need to do the like fire service. We need to do it for Public Works.
Do the fourteen hundred.
Yeah, we'll be eighteen fifty.
For them also.
I think so. I think theirs was the same charge because it was almost on the same low.
Right.
Yeah, I think the ones that were smaller were like the town, you know, the town office and library, fewer fewer intense protocols.
What about the transfer station? That's gonna be more than here. But not as much as.
Right, and I can't remember what she said for pricing on that.
I did not write that down.
There wasn't a page for that? She didn't give a contract?
I have to check with her again on that.
Well, without putting a figure on it, we ought to what, what we ought to do is have her send a statement for each one of these and then we can move forward.
Yeah, I think so.
So I'll get in touch with her.
Yeah, because these say Southport anyway, so, yeah.
This was the one that I had received. I don't know if you have some of those now. Is that two half?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what I have, yeah. Okay, so I'll I'll do that. I'll get in touch with her and have her send those full things up. We can sign them next next time.
Yeah. Oh, I see. She's in Southport. So this one. Okay, yeah, this one's for the library and town office.
Okay, yep.
The, oh, here's transfer station. Here's transfer station.
I was reading this.
Me too. Then I saw, saw the other spot. And then do you have the fire one?
I do have.
Maybe we have them all, but yeah, I guess we do. Didn't go too far.
Library.
There we go.
Trying to remember who else was here that night that would have gotten on.
Yeah.
So it was one for rescue, I thought, Sue, but she talked about the book cost was like two fifty for her.
Yeah, community center was here too. I didn't think there was gonna be a charge.
No, I don't think so, because no employees, since it's for Department of Labor.
So this basically covers all of them. We could sign this then.
I think so.
So we have the town office.
Town office.
The library.
Library.
Okay.
That's restriction.
Fire, Public Works.
Yep. Do I have a motion? I move that we sign contracts for each of the town departments, the fire department, library, town office, Public Works, and transfer station.
Um, should we say in the motion with?
With Lynn Martin. Consultants.
All right, a second.
Well, do it soon.
I did write down on the back that her business, her two fifty is what she said for rescue.
Okay, perfect. I can reach out to her and ask if she can drop a.
A contract.
Contract.
She probably, that probably has it, I'm guessing.
We should have made her say. Post the minutes on the website, any of the websites?
Yeah.
Which one? I I'm looking all over.
It's under, it's under the town, the mountain running.
This one?
Yep, under documents and then select for meeting lists, twenty twenty two.
So Bob, is it the the theory going forward then that I should be planning on putting that amount in the next year's budget, correct? And each apartment will be expected to include that.
Yes, this this will be in one of those. It will have to go for a special. Contingency too. Uh, what do we got? Okay, the freedom.
Sorry, um, we are gonna do one more and that's the rescue?
Yes. Request of Alice for meeting minutes from February to present. Agendas from July to present. And video recording of the select board meetings from June twenty twenty one to present. Mark heard that.
Did you hear that, Mark, about the?
If he can do that.
The uh freedom of access request about video recordings um, from June twenty twenty one through now.
Not sure what we charge for copies right now, but it probably should double since our paper has doubled in price.
Yeah, I think um, I have this email in front of me, but I think what I heard was to download the files from YouTube, we would need to upgrade our account, which will have a fee.
Yes, I'll need to confirm that.
How much would that cost?
We need to check.
Okay. Is it, is that something Mark would have to do?
I think so.
Okay. If you could check that. She would have to pay that.
All all of this information is available on our website.
Yeah.
I know she's been told that.
Okay.
But she has the right to ask, so if she wants it, she can, she will have to pay for it though. Um, the first two hours of our work is free under the freedom of information, it's free, but we can charge for the copies, we can charge for the work we do uh with the station, stuff like that. If we have to buy something that has to be charged and we can ask for that price upfront too. So we'll check with Mark. Yeah, and copies, I'm not sure what the girls are charging right now for copies. We should double that, whatever it was. And I.
Alice, could she just get it?
What's that?
I mean, I know she knows they're online, but she just, she just doesn't want them online.
She wants us to get it.
I'm trying to just find the meeting minutes and I hit document, I went to the library. And then I tried to put in what I wanted and I couldn't get it.
I also saw, I think I saw a price increase for tires. That said the price of tires was going up to three dollars instead of two. I tried to find it real quick this afternoon, but I didn't come up with that. But if that's true, I get that information.
Yeah, on a mobile device where sometimes the menuing is.
Oh, sorry, sorry, if you can help her. I think I saw an email saying that price of tires was from two, three dollars.
I don't remember the price, but it was a substantial increase.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to get that information to Megan so that she'll be charging a little bit more for it. And does anybody have an email for Charlie Vader?
Do you want it?
Yeah.
I'll send it to you.
Good. He's, he wants the information on the bridge, like, because apparently they're doing the bridge. And I think that's all I have.
I'm sorry I wasn't able to come to this meeting, but I was just wondering if there's any update on the North Road.
Yes, I gotta contract this line.
Plunge pool situation.
Yes, we met with the engineers. They came up with a new contract. And Clyde was even there. I don't even know, do we need to vote on it? Yeah, we probably should. We vote to to the agreement on the cooperative agreement that the Department of Transportation wrote up for us for the drainage between Matt Dunn's driveway down to the ditch behind the fire station, which will include a system eight inch, eighteen inch pipe going to the ditch and rocks along the side of the stream behind the fire station.
Okay, they're gonna rip it out that.
They're gonna rip that.
Uh, they're gonna provide a rock.
They're gonna play the rock. We have to.
I see how they go.
Do you mind if I?
You get that whole.
So they took the inexpensive route.
Yeah, they're providing materials, we're providing labor.
Wow. That read dredge it too, or is it, or just laying new rip wrap just in the basin?
Just laying it in. It's just hoping.
So it'll follow the contour that it has existed.
Right, just hoping that more dirt doesn't go down.
So I think to that point, we're gonna have to contract for the work to be done, so therefore if there is something that needs to be done with that ditch, we could include that work as part of the project.
I was just thinking where it's eroded, the way the bank might be worthwhile to bring in some material to fill as much as the DEP will allow, obviously, but so before you rip it out.
I I think what would, could be done is the grassy stuff taken out and then the rocks put down.
Matted.
Yeah.
Probably have to put down a manning and then the rock on top of the manning. Yeah.
That's probably.
And it's, it's, it has eroded a fair amount behind the fire station, so it's.
Yeah, that's not good.
Eric, just so you're aware, there was a limited amount of rip wrap that they're going to provide. So to load to something like.
To chuck loads.
Really? That's not gonna go very far in that dish.
Thirty cubic yards.
Doesn't sound like a really great deal. I guess take what they'll give you, but it still doesn't sound like a lot for that size area.
Yeah.
And we need all permits, so um, do we need to talk to Matt at all?
Um, I will. Oh, yeah, I will. Clyde said that it's basically in the right of way and possibly maybe just one little piece of it isn't. The right of way is thirty three feet to the center line.
No, the rip wrap is for.
The entire length.
For behind the fire station.
Okay.
We'll also be supplying one type F five catch basin. And approximately a hundred and twenty feet of the eighteen inch.
The rip wrap that's there and the funnel can be, could be reused.
See, I'll reclaim that for sure. Probably better off to leave it as is and then we're.
Well, that's all gonna be ripped out to put the catch basin in.
Yeah.
So they're not setting back down in on top of that rip wrap?
No.
That catch basin isn't.
It's gonna be deeper than that funnel is now.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be at least a foot deeper.
With the metal grates.
Oh, right.
They'll have a two foot catch basin.
Yeah.
That's what they put in the final agreement.
Right, they wanted to dig up Matt's driveway and we said no. Yeah, so they showed it being dug up.
What was their purpose for?
Because they wanted to call it under the driveway, eighteen inches, sixteen inch now. And, yeah, the depth of the six, yeah, six feet underground.
Oh, wow. So.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Two feet before the pipe goes out to the fire station.
Right, so they can clean the sand out. I thought every year, the guy didn't seem to be thinking every year.
No, every five years, I think is what he said. That is typical.
Yeah, I think that's probably your wishful thinking.
If we keep finding, we'll do it every year or every two years.
But it's been approved by DOT and DEP. So.
If it's an improvement to stop the erosion, certainly for the fire station concerns, it's a
It's a step in the right direction.
Getting narrower and narrower as far as, well, there's less to mo.
There's one, one plus.
Dana wanted that all trimmed.
Yeah.
And Charlie tried doing it a few times, but that is, you can't do it.
It's, it's not, right. It's dangerous to do it, so with the rip wrap, it'll get much better for sure.
Captain, were you able to get to meeting minutes?
I wasn't, you know, somewhere, I wanted to look at meeting minutes from last two weeks ago and because I wasn't here, I missed that meeting and I didn't.
Oh, they're not in yet.
That's not in yet. That's.
It'll be in.
Approved tonight.
Yeah, they just got approved. They can't put them in until they get approved.
I see. Okay, so, so nobody can read them before they, before they come to this meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Right. I'm smiling. You can't tell.
I just wanted to know you were approving.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a couple of changes in it, that's why.
Okay.
They were minor, but they still can't be. Written up.
Did we get that motion second? Backed in and voted on?
Did I make the motion?
You did make the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second. We got distracted talking about.
Call vote.
Sorry.
Okay. That's all I had. Anna?
Um, I think the basin was just my last thing that we already talked about. Yes.
And I don't care about my pile. Carl?
I have nothing else.
Nothing, you got anything for us?
No.
Anything from Bill?
And if you have anything, you can say something. I, I want to know, what was the name of the doctor that was here? Rachel?
Chriswell.
Said, I don't hear.
Criswell, C R I S W E L L.
C R I S W E L L. Okay.
Is it one L or two? I can't remember.
True, I think it's two.
Hours down.
Okay, that's gotta go. That's gotta go.
She's been in the meeting minutes from the meeting prior to that too, so.
I know, I don't hear. So if I, I'm sitting here trying to re listen here.
Yeah.
And I was very worried. Carl, you, low tones, forget. I can hear. I'll send my moments down.
Yeah, I haven't seen Mike in a long time. Other than, he got stopped in the middle of the road back there. And I was wondering why he was stopped.
Are you talking about in the cars?
No, Bill was stopped in the middle of the road and Mike was flagging him down. I thought Mike was having troubles. So I stopped too. So there was three of us stopped in the middle of the road.
Why?
I don't.
I didn't even hear about that. All right.
So to adjourn.
Second.
Boo. Turn at eight eleven.
All right, good night. Good night, everyone on the internet.
Everybody on the internet.